Oh, we're up on a little bit of a. Uh-oh.
Good evening. I'd like to call this January, no, we're in February, February thirteenth, meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to Order. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for coming out tonight. We have, I would like to mention that we are a board member short. Mr. Breeden couldn't be with us tonight. He had. Second. Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor, please state aye. Aye. Please rise and remove all headgear so we can do the National Anthem. I mean, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Now if you'll please join me in a moment of silence. And Volunteer of the Month. But I believe before you start speaking, I'm supposed to talk. Bring everyone up to speed. And it's been a while since we've talked about these people. So we just wanted to recognize who Brittany Lamb and Kelly Cogsdale were. And tonight's Kelly Cogsdale's turn. So Kelly, I guess I need to back up a little bit. I grew up in 4H. I was very active in 4H, even became state 4H president. And at that time, we had an amazing extension agent named Pete Martens. And right after I graduated, Pete retired, and we didn't know, who could we possibly find to replace this, this great agent, this person who had been part of, part of Rockingham 4H for, for many, many years. And we were kind of in that turmoil like we are right now. How are we going to replace our superintendent? But we amazingly found a wonderful woman by the name of Kelly Cogsdale. And about nineteen. Was very active, teaching kids all sorts of things. Now, so I was in 4H, and now you might. And we learned lots of life skills. And in nineteen ninety-two, or in the nineties, to develop more leadership skills. The saying was, we're not cows in plows anymore. And Kelly went to a training and learned about this program called Character Counts. And she brought it back to Rockingham County, brought it to the school board, and after a little bit of time and a little bit of tweaks, it became a program here in Rockingham County. Actually, one of the first Character Counts programs in the nation. And now Character Counts is a big program with all sorts of support for it. There's pillars. Let's see if I can do this. It's caring, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility. Help me out, citizenship, and. And display high character. And one thing I'll never forget about. She was very, she, she, she had all the pillars. And one was her caring pillar. Kelly at the grocery store. And she reassured me and sat and listened to me. And just was very caring and supportive of me going through that rough time. Only later did I find out that she had been diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. And she passed away a very short time after that. But even with this knowledge, she was caring about others. And just always so kind. So that's always how I will remember Kelly. Not only as a great person for, for bringing this program to us, but also by exemplifying all those, those pillars. So now that, now that you all know who Kelly Cogsdale is, I'm going to turn the, the program over to Mr. Baker, and we can honor some of our young Character Counts.
Oh, very good. Thank you. We, we were just ready to jump right into it over here. So I apologize for not pausing a little bit there. And actually, what, what we decided to do is we put together. We certainly are always glad to host our school board. And we're glad you're here. We're very thankful for the work you do and the way you support us each day. Our focus this year at Hilliard has revolved around community and connections, and the role that those concepts play in our day-to-day operations with our faculty and staff, students, and with the broader community. And we want our adults to connect with students, but we also want students to connect with the adults. And we want students to connect with other students. We want students to have voice and agency, and the larger community to be a part of all of these connections and conversations. With strong community and connections, we can make a huge difference in the lives of our students, faculty and staff, as well as for the families that we serve. So we would just like to highlight a few of the ways in which we are seeking to do that this year.
More than we could even say with our words. So at the start of this school year, we spent time working here in the building with outside help strengthening our backpack program because we know how. Met. Our Hawks Boutique is a shop run by our Hawks Heroes student group. The shop contains hygiene items, clothing items, school supplies, and fun items, all for student purchase with our school-based token economy. So students here can earn talents, and then they can take those talents to the Hawks Boutique and purchase items that they need, or just things that they want. Many of those items are donated, and other items we purchase through the support of our community partners. Students use those talents they've earned to make the right choices to buy items for themselves or others. And it was really exciting when we opened this up at Christmas time, because a lot of students don't have money to go out and purchase items for their families. And they were very excited to get those items, and then have the Hawks Heroes wrap those gifts, and then they were able to take them to their family members. So some of the pictures are from that. There's our backpack program, and some pictures from the Hawks Boutique. So thank you for the support from our community to make these two programs. Has allowed us to introduce circle discussions to this program, and it has strengthened student-to-student and student-to-teacher connections. Everything Community Night again this year, bringing together many of our families and teachers in a fun and interactive evening meant to promote literacy, but also to promote school and. The Task Force hosted a community night at the Burton Community Center and the Plains Community Center earlier this year, and we hope to host these events in all of our feeder areas as the year goes on. The purpose of these events is to connect with all of our attendance areas, meet families where they are, and introduce Hilliard to our upcoming elementary students.
Thank you, Amy. Community and connections are important for a strong faculty and staff, also important for the student development and well-being, and also necessary for the broader community to feel part of what's going on in the school. In an effort to give attention to and to nurture these important relationships, JF HMS has created a student support team. School counselors, administrators, the alternative education. Success. The new School Resource Officer has also recently joined several of the meetings, providing another valued voice. And we do that one student at a time. While school may be especially tough for some students, those ones we usually talk. Each day at JF HMS, embracing all of the positives that a school this size has to offer. At this time, we would like to recognize two very special students. You will learn in just a few minutes that these two specialize in connecting and serve as examples to all of us. Mr. Martin will now recognize our Kelly Cogsdale, Brittany Lamb, Character Counts students for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. So it's my honor to get to where you were so happy to start off with, to present to you our students that we'd like to recognize this afternoon. And our first one is Emily Good. So if Emily, if you would, come on up for me, please. Like to read some words. A lot of these came from actual teachers, your teachers. Of school activities is noted by her teachers. She's extremely polite in interactions with peers and adults on an extraordinarily regular basis. In all these efforts, Emily displays a high-level maturity and quiet determination. Teachers count on Emily to be quite, or to be a great example of how to stay on task, participate in class appropriately, and respect others. Described as, and I quote, "kind and gentle soul who is a friend to all." There's little doubt that Emily will be successful in any path she chooses in the future. Her strong character will continue to grow, and she will make a world a better place. It is a pleasure to observe you each day, Emily, and to know what great things await you. Thank you for making J. Frank Hilliard a better place.
Emily, thank you so much for being an outstanding.
Parents and both my sisters.
Do they have names?
Grace, Brian, Hannah, and Lydia.
Grace, Brian. Thank you all so much for, for, for being there for Emily and, and just teaching her how to be. Emily, we have some, some goodies for you. As I kind of stated earlier, this particular award is close to my heart because I was a friend of Kelly. And so we have a pin for you to wear close to your heart to always remember this, this achievement that you've done. Then we also have, and as a proud mama, I know mama wants something to hang on the wall to say how awesome her, her daughter is. So we have this for you to put up on your wall at home. And then, because life is sweet, we, and we really want to give you something that you'll really enjoy, we have a gift card for Klein's Dairy Bar for you. So thank you, and let's give Emily another round of applause.
Isaac. Seeking input from teachers and describing Isaac, there was no shortage of accolades. A string of positive adjectives and descriptors support Isaac. Because they also note his positivity, good nature, and helpfulness. He is described as both a leader and a great supporter. Is friendly, polite, interested, and so on. The director of this year's school musical noted that Isaac is up for any project, activity, or challenge, and will greet it with a sense of fun that is infectious. Isaac's kindness and willingness to engage with any and all of his peers distinguishes, distinguishes him in a special way. There's little doubt that his positive impact will help to ensure a good school year for many of his friends and peers. Isaac, your commitment to being a person of sound character is noted and appreciated. The level of kindness that you show to others, peers, and staff members is impressive. The staff and administration of J. Frank Hilliard Middle School wish you well as you transition to Broadway High School and in all your future endeavors. Thank you for giving all your best.
Apparently you feed him well too, because he grows. But it all begins at home. So thank you all for sharing him with us. A certificate for your wall, and of course, the ice cream for you as well. And quick, quick plug for the musical. When's the musical? Do you know?
March thirty-first, April first, and April second.
There you go. March thirty-first, April first and second. And what's the name of the musical this year?
Beauty and the Beast.
Beauty and the Beast. Ah, I think we, so we can all look forward to being here, the end of March, beginning of April, and seeing Isaac. Are you performing? Or are you behind? Oh, what, what's your part?
Beast.
This is the Beast guys. That makes sense. So thank you so much. And everyone come back.
The privilege each year of recognizing a volunteer. This volunteer is a little bit different than some of what we've done in the past. We started here. Think we're doing it once a month. We just kind of shut everything down for a little bit over an hour at the end of the day. And we let kids just do something fun, or engaging, or something that they can explore, something a bit different. Well, our volunteer that we want to recognize this year, who could not be here this evening because she fell ill today, but I wanted to talk about her anyway. Donna Bell Dove retired in two thousand ten from Shenandoah County Public Schools after teaching in their middle school for thirty-four years, thirty-four years in middle school. I'm impressed. She taught science every year, and a few years she even taught math and language arts in addition to that. When approached. Uh, when approached earlier in the school year by Carla Van Gilder Dick about an idea for Curiosity Hour activity, Donna Bell was more than willing to offer her assistance. Carla notes that she is very appreciative of Donna Bell's work. Out to play and interacting with them. And the report is that she's played with nearly every student in the group by this point in the year. When I. The power of connection is something that we have focused on throughout the year. So these simple acts of kindness and the time spent having fun with students is precisely what was envisioned when Curiosity Hour started here. Thank you, Donna Bell, for working with our students, for your investment of time and energy. That is all very much appreciated. And I wish she were here to hear us talk about her tonight, but I will be sharing these words with her.
Thank you. Yes, I wish she was here too, because we have a gift certificate and a, for Klein's Dairy Bar and a certificate for her wall as well. If you can make sure she gets that and definitely pass on, uh, her, our appreciation. Because without volunteers at the school, there, there's so, so many things wouldn't be accomplished. So please, please pass along our. Night. We definitely enjoy being in the schools. Now we'll move on to our Inspire Awards.
Good evening. We transferred to, um, to Virginia from Florida last school year, and my then second grader had a tough transition as it was her first year into the public school system. She started off in one class at Lacy Spring, but in a few weeks, a new class was formed, and she was transferred into Ms. Lehman's class. At first, we thought this was a lot of change for a seven-year-old, but it ended up this was a blessing in disguise. Throughout the year, Ms. Lehman nurtured my daughter's creativity, cultivated an engaging learning environment, encouraged her endlessly, and has been instrumental in her emotional and. Be another classmate, but they want it to be just like Ms. Lehman when they grow up. And to me, this is a testament that she is more than a teacher. Ms. Lehman is a gift to the Lacy Spring Elementary School as well as to my daughter and our family. Every child deserves Ms. Lehman in their life.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Lehman, for being that teacher in all your children, all the children's lives. And it's so, and, oh, so this is the Inspire Award, and we're inspired. Uh, oh, you guys can go. And I'll go ahead and bring up, uh, Taylor Roadcap, uh, presenting to Jamie McGovern, the English teacher at Broadway. And while you guys walk up, I'll explain that the, uh, the. And, uh, honor teachers who have inspired them. So, and we love this, we look forward to this.
Choice I've ever had to make. She is by far my favorite teacher this year, and every day she inspires me and everyone else to do their best and to be themselves. Her. Know her, will talk about how amazing she is, and I look forward to going to class every day. My favorite thing about how she teaches is that she allows us to have a say. She encourages us to have class discussions about various topics, and in doing so, it allows us to communicate with each other and get different points of view. I hope everyone has a chance to have a teacher as amazing and kind as she is, and I absolutely love my English class, and it's definitely all thanks to her.
Thank, thank you all. Isn't that great to hear? She loves her English class. We'll now have Ramona Ritchie presenting to.
And one-on-one assistant for over four years at Lacy Elementary. Emma was diagnosed at the age of three of a rare genetic disorder, and she passed away April 19th, 2022. Ms. Ashley loved, respected, and accepted Emma unconditionally. She allowed and encouraged Emma to do whatever she could do for herself while providing a safe environment for Emma. She knew Emma very well, and she knew what was normal for Emma and what wasn't. She knew when there were concerns or changes, and would communicate that with the school and with the. And so patient with Emma, and Emma responded so positively to you. Ms. Ashley celebrated Emma's accomplishments with her, even if it was just feeding herself a couple bites for lunch or walking downstairs two steps at a time without holding on to Ms. Ashley or the handrails or saying a word or two. She played dress up many days. Emma loved to play dress up in her little princess dresses. And her and Ms. Ashley would dress up a lot in their princess dresses, especially if it was frozen characters. Emma was so happy when she saw that, and she would clap and giggle, and just the smile lit up the room. We as a family, and there's. Here, the grandparents and the nieces and aunts, and we just all loved Emma so much, and we miss her. To a special needs child. She has been a true blessing to Emma and an inspiration to our family and to Emma. And Emma will live on through Ms. Ashley and through the lives that she touched at Lacy and our family. And we thank you, and we love you so much, Ms. Ashley. Thank you. And this is Emma's mother, my daughter, Bethany.
Um, I don't know what to say. Um. Wonderful child. And she does live. She does live on. Oh, my. Thank you all for sharing that story, and thank you for sharing your, your love of Emma with us. I guess now we will move on. It says School Board Appreciation Month, so that's February.
Yes.
Did, did you have something?
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, February is School Board Appreciation Month, and, um, I have certificates from the Virginia School Boards Association for you. And in your folders, you also have a gift certificate from, um, the division to use, you know, downtown. And some of you have already seen this during dinner, and, um, being a school board member, I've. Spend an enormous amount of time to work through difficult decisions. Our families, of our students, um, for our staff that, that you take and what you bring to the school board to make Rockham County Public Schools the great school division that it is. So, uh, thank you, and, um, I hope you do enjoy the small token of our appreciation, and I will, um, provide you with the gift certificate, with the certificates from V S B A as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. And I think I can speak for the board when I say it is our privilege to, to do this, especially when we hear such inspiring stories like Emma's and the teachers. And thank you, Dr. Scheichel, for, for speaking for a moment so I could recompose myself, because, um, yeah, those, those Inspire Awards were truly inspirational and, um, touching tonight. So thank you all for sharing. We'll now move on to public comments. And first on the list is Ms.
As you know, I'm Nancy Bassett, President of the Rockham County Education Association, and February is a spectacular month. Of our appreciation for all that you do for the students, our teachers, and our staff. And we just want you to know how much we really do appreciate you.
Thank you. And I did forget we have a three-minute timer, and, uh, thank you to Mr. Gillette for, for keeping the timer for us. Our next speaker is Sarah Horst. What's that? Oh, but there's a spare. There's a spare.
Hi, my name is Sarah Hurst, and I'm a former teacher in this county. And since it's budget season, I'd like to bring two things to your attention. Thousands of dollars to obtain are valued and acknowledged with supplemental pay. So here are the counties I checked on today using the most current scales, and this is an annual supplement. So Green County, um, pays an additional supplement for a master's degree. They pay $2,200. Stanton pays $2,297. Rockingham, coming in at third from the bottom, is $2,485, and this has not been updated in the 14 years that I was employed. Albemarle County, $2,699. Harrisonburg City, $2,700, though that was based on the 2021-22 scale. Bath County and Highland County, um, both do $3,000 for the master's supplement. Shenandoah County at $3,171. So we know that student achievement increases when the teacher's training increases. And I've got to say, this is kind. I want to mention is out-of-pocket expenses for teachers. Teachers can deduct $300 per year on our own taxes, and yes. See money to spend on instructional items, but teachers spend much, much more than that out of pocket every year. It's easy for those small things, for the prize box, to just jump into our grocery carts, that we just absorb into our grocery bill, and we love doing that for our kids. But those things add up. But the one I want to focus on is the amount of out-of-pocket money that teachers pay for curriculum needs. That's more concerning. In the 2021-22 school year, I paid about $180 out of pocket for curriculum needs for such things as decodable passages, for letters implementation, and various science and social studies things, because we don't really have a curriculum for that in the elementary school. We need to plan.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ryan Liskey, and I'd like to address the board, um, and, and just share a different side of the community's perspective. This is School Board Appreciation Month, and I can't tell you how absolutely disappointed we are in our board. Hopefully, 2024 will be a much, much better year for our students here in Rockham County, with four of you are here tonight, and five, including Mr. Breeden, gone, uh, from elected office, and particularly us paying you. This week, I had an opportunity to, uh, to attend the search committee and public comment section as we look for a new superintendent. I was very disappointed with how, um, the presenter started. He started by, uh, by saying how proud they were of helping. look for someone to help represent Rockham County. I'd like to propose a litmus test. It's very simple. We need someone board superintendent know how many genders there are. Can he say unequivocally, the answer is two? If not, he shouldn't be qualified or she qualified for our search committee. Hopefully, that would save us a ton of time. What many parents are concerned about in Rockham County is that the current board is going to poison this new superintendent on their way out. We already have Mr. Falk leaving. And I, it's amazing, you're still alive. I hear you're starting to put out signature requests. Unimaginable when you so blatantly accuse parents of being negligent when schools are absolutely pushing transgender ideologies on them. And so in the last 40 seconds, what I'd like to make very clear is we don't want to waste our time and money making moral courage to represent our community. Thank you.
I need you to remind folks of point five on the rules of procedure, comment rules of procedure, that all comments should be directed to the school board as a whole and not individual board members. Okay, that concludes our public comments for the evening. And I would like to provide everyone the opportunity to take just a five-minute break, or not even a five-minute break, like two seconds if you would like to step out. Now would be a very good time for that. We're going to be moving on to board member comments in just a moment. And we're going to start with Dr. McWilkin. If you're ready, are you ready?
Oh, I'm ready. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Lohr. I would like to begin us this evening. It was absolutely wonderful. We appreciate the fact that you welcome us and we enjoyed to all the people who participated in the superintendent's search. People who completed the online survey, people who emailed Kevin Castner, Dr. Castner, with additional comments. Thank you for all the people who came and spoke at the open forums and during the day. We are very grateful for everybody who took the time to give your input into what we're looking for as a superintendent. Now, Dr. Castner and Dr. Harris are going to gather all this information that they gleaned in the last two days, on Tuesday and Thursday of this past week. And they'll present on, it's February the 27th. Two weeks from today, we'll be in the county government office progressing. And once again, a big thank you to everyone who participated. My last highlight is the fact that Mr. Cross, we're in Richmond. We were at the Virginia School Boards Association Legislative Conference, and we were listening to what here what Virginia has to say and how they're proceeding with funding our school divisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Now we'll go, let's see. We'll go with Mr. Cross. Sorry. I'm still new at all this. So we'll go to the other end and come this way then.
That's fine. Welcome everyone out tonight. Thank you for coming out to the school board. And thank you for everyone, all the teachers that came out tonight. And we're handed awards tonight. Job well done. And we're thankful for you working in Rockham County Public Schools and then all that you do, that you pour your life into these kids. And we're seeing you have such an impact on their lives. So thank you for all the teachers that were presented awards tonight. I mean, she's the principal at Elkton Elementary School. She will be retiring at the end of this year. And she's had such a successful career in Rockham County. I remember when she was at Montevideo Middle and the work she had done there. And then to be the principal at Elkton Elementary, you've done a great job, Barbara. And people like her, you can hire 100 teachers, but will you end up with a Barbara Palmer like that? I don't know. She's incredible. Her husband, Mark, are two highlights here in Rockham County Public Schools. You just, you just don't get people like that every day applying. And they, she will be missed tremendously. So I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Barbara Palmer, for all the work that you've put in and all that you've done for our community here in Rockham County. Thank you so much. And my second highlight tonight is I'd like to highlight SRO Samantha Klein. She's in the back tonight. Everybody can in the first year or so of me being on the board. But we'd only hired three SROs in over 20-plus years. And working was so important. And to add four SROs, to have every single middle school now covered in Rockham County Public Schools is for me is a dream come true. And to have Deputy Klein being the SR here, SRO here at J. Frank is a great asset to this community and to the schools. And so you're going to be blessed by having her here at this school. And so Samantha, thank you for coming, wanting to be the SRO here. And I know that you're going to plug right in and do a great job serving our community as well. So thank you so much for the job that you do. Thank you so much. And that's all the two highlights I have tonight.
Mr. Cross? Mr. Falk? Well, okay. Because Dr. McWilkin and Mr. Cross stole some of my highlights, but you're not going to steal my last one, that's for sure. Well, my last ones. Yes, we were able to go to Richmond and lobby on behalf of our students. And then Dr. McWilkin and I were able to get some good training that I hope we can bring to the board and really help us do great things for kids. And then Officer Klein, it's so wonderful to have you here. And I found out tonight that you're covering not only J. Frank, but also Falk's Run and Plains, two of my favorite schools, although they're like kids, they're all my favorite schools. But Falk's Run is a super special school. And my kids, of course, went to Plains, so that one is a special place in my heart. So thank you so much for being here. It's wonderful to see the SROs come into our schools. And God bless you for doing middle school. But my other highlight, I was able to go to Broadway High School last week and help them, help the ag classes do some butchering. So that's always fun, having kids cut up a hog and make it into sausage and then ask for a donation for the sausage to help support the program. It not only is a great way for kids to learn where their food comes from, it's a great fundraising project. So that's always a fun, a fun time for me. And then my, being here tonight is definitely a highlight. It's so wonderful to see everyone in person, be in the school. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for hosting us tonight. And then, of course, my highlight of the year is coming up at the end of the week. Everybody make sure, clear your calendars, because musical starts this weekend. Let's see, we have TA and East Rock this weekend. So do they have a Thursday night performance? Thursday, Friday, Saturday night performances? And then Sunday matinee, I believe. So if you have any time free this weekend, I highly recommend taking in a musical. They are fantastic. And with that, we'll go on to Dr. Scheichel.
Thank you, Chair Lohr. This is always going to be Broadway High School to me. When it comes to musicals, they have been some of the most fantastic musicals ever done in Rockham County on this stage right behind you with sometimes special permission from the Firemark school here, and Amy went to school here as a student. So truly, the administrators, you know, have these connections here at board members in front of you, you have a little goodie bag that is also a thank you from the counselors. So on the one hand, I want to make sure that I say thank you for your support for our school counselors, for all the people in Rockham County that provide, you know, services to our students. But in this particular case, our school counselors. And so the state's done quite a bit over the last few years to increase the number of counselors that we have available to protect that time. And so we're very appreciative of the school counselors, but also, of course, of the support from this board for our school counselors. And then Deputy Klein in the back, so I can say this, you know, personally to you. Again, it's a pleasure to have you here. And I also want to read the following. So February 15th, 2023, is School Resource Officer Appreciation Day in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So two days to go, but we appreciate you every day, just like all the other SROs we have. And the proclamation is as follows, by virtue of the authority vested by the Constitution and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. Critical members of the educational community who dedicate their lives to keeping students and schools safe. And whereas most school divisions and law and there are more than 800 exceptionally trained, dedicated men and women in law enforcement who serve as school resource officers in our elementary, middle, and high schools, providing support and encouragement and serving as role models, law enforcement officers, and educators. And now therefore, I, Glenn Youngkin, do hereby recognize February 15th, 2023, as School Resource Officer Appreciation Day in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of our citizens. So thank you to Governor Youngkin for this proclamation and recognition of our SROs. Also, of course, thank you to the school board for working with us last year to work with Sheriff Hutchison to have a process in place where these components that Governor Youngkin recognizes were also a part of that process. Right, that this is law enforcement at one level, but also models, establishing relationships with students so they have positive interactions and feel safe at school. And Sheriff Hutchison you know, working with us last year rather than, you know, asking for local funds to increase the number of SROs in our school by using state funds at least for the next few years and not taxing the citizens in Rockham County. And so as a result, over time, it was a process that didn't result in four SROs all at once. We were able to add those. So again, thank you to Sheriff Hutchison and also to the school board and those at the state level who made it financially possible for us to make these additions. And again, Deputy Klein, thank you, and happy School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. We'll now move on to our action items. This is where we vote and conduct the business of the school board. So the first item, action item we have tonight are the minutes. And I'm going to combine the first two items if the board sees fit. The minutes from January 23rd. Second, thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please we're going to move on to the bills and mileage. Dr. Scheichel?
Yeah, you have the bills and mileage for January 2023.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Do I hear a motion for the bills and mileage? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote on passing the bills and mileage for January 23. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same side. Motion carries unanimously. Sorry. Next on the agenda are field trips. Dr. Scheichel?
What members, you have a number of field trips for your approval tonight. The details are again in your materials, but I'll review the actual field trips with you as usual. So Spotswood High School, DECA State Leadership Conference, March 3rd through the 5th, seven students to Virginia Beach, FFA Chesapeake Bay Foundation, March 20th through the 22nd, 15 students to Port Isabel Island, Virginia, All-State Choir and Band, April 27th and 28th, six students to Richmond, Broadway High School, TSA State DECA State Leadership Conference, March 3rd through the 6th, 14 students to Virginia Beach, and FCCLA State Leadership Conference, two students to Richmond, and I recommend approval of those field trips.
Great, thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Those sound like some really great field trips. Do I hear a motion to approve the field trips? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion on the field trips? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the superintendent's recommendation to approve the field trips as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have Ms. Cheryl Mast with Budget Calendar.
Chair Lohr, members of the board, and Dr. Scheichel. In front of you this evening is a revised budget calendar for 23
to vote on the budget.
I do recommend approval of the revised budget calendar. I just want to add in Supervisors, based on how the board meetings work with the board of supervisors, my presentation to the board of supervisors won't be until April. And so that allows us to use a regular meeting rather than bringing everyone in for a special meeting, to use a regular meeting for my presentation and then still have that meeting a couple of days later. So that's the reason why we changed that because it, because of the board of supervisors meeting, we don't have to compress it quite as much and can use a little bit of a different approach. But I do recommend approval of this revised calendar. And thank you, Ms. Mast, for all your work as always.
Wonderful, thank you both for all of that. Do I hear a motion? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? I do want to thank you, Ms. Mast for, and. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries unanimously. Next.
Chair Lord, Dr. Schikele, members of the board, this evening I bring to you a number of bids. Was properly specified and advertised. We had four general contractors return sealed bids. The sealed bid numbers that you see here is the base bid for the addition, the two-story academic wing, and then the team room, weight room addition. It also includes a bathroom facility that includes a concession stand at the main athletic field. It includes an alternate for tile wainscoting in the new hallways of the addition. It also includes an alternate for replacing the edge metal along the top of the roof. Our recommendation is to award the contract to the low bidder, Lance Construction of Broadway, in the amount of $12,741,500. This will bring the total project budget to about $14,600,000. Scope of work that we will handle ourself. We see that as a cost savings. We've got a number of science labs in. Addition to the general contractor scope. You know, some other little things such as lockers for the team room. We'll purchase furnishings for all of the classrooms in the addition. We will pull the, the communication cabling and that will not be part of the general contractor scope, but we'll bid that separately. And we see all of those as savings. Saves us a couple of dollars.
I do want to say thank you to Mr. Reed and his team. I've had a chance and Ms. Mast did as well to sit in on the opening of the sealed bids. And I can tell you that the level of respect that every single one of those people who's, who brings a bid and the architect, the level of respect they have for Mr. Reed and, and his incredible knowledge of how to do this. And that's why I asked, you know, to give a little bit of a sense how in every piece you try to make the best use of taxpayer money when we look at square foot cost of. And so I enjoy, I have to say this, you know, personally, I always enjoy when I sit in a meeting with Steve and the vendor, oftentimes vendors. And I just sit back and, you know, they always want me there because they want superintendents there, you know, so they can talk us into stuff. And I just sit back and say, I'll bring the popcorn and I'll enjoy the show because of what Steve does as a result of that. So that, that needs to be said. You're doing amazing work with all this and it's so thrilling to see. I remember when we moved from here over to the other, to the new high school, at that time, as a social studies teacher, I was already told, hey, don't get too comfortable with the windows because that's where we're going to expand. And to now see that expansion happen, although it goes in a different direction, is, is really is amazing to see that expansion over there. It aligns capacity across elementary, middle and high schools here in the Broadway attendance area. So thank you for all your work and I do recommend to award the contract to the low bidder, Lance Construction Company of Broadway, Virginia, in the amount of $12,741,500 with the total $6 million.
Wonderful, thank you. I think the chair is going to go ahead and move to follow. Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you. I know the.
Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Thank you, now you have another one, right?
For the second bid, we have replacement of the visitor bleachers at the main athletic field at Broadway High School. The bid for the replacement of the visitor bleachers at Broadway High School was specified and advertised. We had the package sent to 10 firms and we had three firms respond with sealed bids. Our recommendation is to award the contract to the low bidder, Grand Stand Designs and Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $267,500. I will note that this is the same company that did the visitor bleachers at Turner Ashby High School a couple of years ago. And the design for the bleachers at Broadway are exactly the same as what we did at TA.
I do recommend approval of the bid as presented.
Go ahead and vote on the, on the motion to follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the contract for replacing the main athletic field visitors. Motion carries unanimously. And you have another one.
The next bid is for replacement of the baseball bleachers at Turner Ashby High School. Before I note that we worked with the staff at Turner Ashby and we will be modifying the configuration of the bleachers. This will allow them to do some expansion to their bullpen area, which was something that they said they greatly needed. So we will be, again, we'll be modifying what's there. So it's not going to be a one-for-one replacement, but it will be a modification of what's there. So the bid again was sent to 10 firms. We had four respond. And our recommendation is to award the contract to the low bidder, TJ Distributors, in the amount of $78,220.
And again, I do recommend approval of the bid as presented by Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Dr. Schikele. Is there a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation regarding the replacement of the bleachers at the baseball field at Turner Ashby High School.
Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Is there a second?
Thank you for doing it, number one. Thank you for, for doing all this that you're doing. But I'm, I'd like to see, especially in, in our economy and. And I think their closest was $80,000 difference. So I understand that. And this one, I'd, I'd love for us, if a board, if we could, to go along with this, but to negotiate with either Rodenizer, or I think it's Rodenizer Construction or Harrisonburg, they're about $9,000 to $10,000 difference in this. And so if we could negotiate with them to get it down a little closer to where they're at, I'd like to spend our money locally instead of, instead of sending it to Maryland, if all possible. It's about a $9,000, $10,000 difference. And if we could spend it here locally, it would be nice to spend it here locally as well. So the board tonight, I would like to have a motion to ask the superintendent or Mr. Reed to negotiate with our two local contractors and see if we can get it closer to where they're at.
Is that something that we're allowed to do or do we have to do these under sealed bids?
I would, I would say that the current board policy requires us to. Duro's decision, that policy could be changed, but right now the policy that we under does require. And it's shown to be a good company, good quality company to work with.
Absolutely. I'd definitely not question their ability or quality of work. Only thing I'm asking the board is to, is to consider when we're, we're this close to $9,000, $10,000 in difference, to be able to look at spending it here locally instead of sending it out.
I do want to mention that in Virginia, a lot of this falls under the Virginia Public Procurement Act. And so there are rules in place for that. And when state and local governments follow this, even though we have our own, you know, policy, but when we use competitive sealed bidding, the, the VPPA requires the purchasing agency to award the contract to the responsive and responsible bidder with the lowest price. So there are legal requirements. It's not simply that, that we're saying, hey, let's spend the least amount of money, which has its own reason, but there are legal aspects to it as well.
And they were requested as sealed bids. We're not allowed to go, are we allowed to go back and say, hey?
On, on doing this. So we'd need to look at that in the future to be able to send our money more locally than out of state. So that's all I'm asking for. Been this for the past year of trying to get our, spend our money here locally. And so if it's not tonight, maybe we can push something through in the coming months.
I would like to have more information. I think tonight we, we're, we need to move ahead with what we have, but it would be nice to get more information about how that process looks and what our legal requirements are. But I think in this case, legally, we are required to go with the lowest bid. Is that correct? Is that what you were saying, Dr. Schikele?
Yeah, and there are also, even with competitive negotiations, there are provisions in, in the law. So again, this isn't just because school divisions want to use the lowest bid, there are simply regulations that prevent public bodies from having relationships with firms and then basically award a contract to someone that we simply prefer. So even if you go to, even if you go through competitive negotiations, there's a process to rank those and then you're. The contract regardless of whether they are providing that service as a, at the most reasonable price to the taxpayer. So I understand, you know, whether concerned.
So any further discussion? Hearing none, we will vote on, hold on, let me get it. We will vote on the motion on the floor, which is to follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the contract for replacing the bleachers at the baseball field at Turner Ashby High School to the low bidder as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to our final bid for the night.
Last but not least, the last bid that I'm bringing here is the renovation of the football, the main field athletic bleachers at Turner Ashby for ADA compliance. What we will be doing there, among other things, is installing handrails up the stairwells, up the stairways. That will, to, to do that, we'll have to shorten the bleachers so we make the. Adding a walkway in front of the bleachers that will allow for seating in front of the bleachers for.
Recommend approval of the bid as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the contract for modifying the bleachers to ADA standard at the main athletic field at Turner Ashby High School to the low bidder as presented by Steve Reed.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Reed. That concludes our action items for the night. We'll now move on to information items, but before, and while you guys filter down maybe, I think we're going to start with Katie Lapierre. But I want to thank, I guess, Mr. Fitzgerald for our counselor survival kit. And I'm going to dip into my counselor survival kit and have a lifesaver while you guys present before I cough. And if I start coughing, please forgive me.
To be on the other end of criticism and people saying things. And I'm sorry tonight, Ms. McWilkin, of what was said about you. It was very unnecessary. And I can't just pass by this moment and just act like it wasn't said. And so I appreciate you as a person and I appreciate your years of service on the board. And your life carries value. And I pray many more years. Moses didn't start his, his ministry till he was 80. And I tell people all, all the time that if you got breath, you're still right on time. And I appreciate everything that you do. And it's been a pleasure to get to know you. And I'm spending a little, little time we did in Richmond together, but I'm.
Thank you.
Yes. Before we begin our presentation.
I'd like to start by thanking you for allowing us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. For the past five months, we've been working hard to effectively answer one question. What would a safe and caring school environment look like for all of us in our CPS? One where all levels of our needs are met and where we can reach self-actualization throughout our school day?
My peers and I are all here tonight to share details about the project we've been working on since the beginning of the school year. We'll discuss our work in classrooms and on field trips, and then communicate what needs students in our school system have. And most importantly, propose the overall solution that we feel will best meet those needs.
In our English 11 classes in the fall, 450 juniors from our county's high schools were introduced to the Safe and Caring Schools Project. The SOLs at our grade level lend themselves well to a project such as this.
One aspect of the project that I appreciated the most was the curricular connection to psychology with our framework. Abraham Maslow, an American humanistic psychologist, developed a theory that asserted that all human behavior is motivated by our needs. of needs beneath it. At the very bottom level are physiological needs, which are necessary for survival and include air, food, water, and sleep. Above that, at level two, are safety needs, which represent our health and also our physical safety. Level three needs reflect our need to develop meaningful relationships and to feel connected and accepted by others. Once we reach level four, we reach not only respect for others, but also respect for ourselves, as well as confidence, recognition, and freedom.
To truly understand Maslow's hierarchy of needs, many of us participated in a Kiva plank activity. This activity allowed us the opportunity to experience how having certain needs met leads to a feeling of success. On the other hand, however, it also showed us how no
If students were seated at table one, they had access to resources such as unlimited planks and adult help. However, if students were leg, which resulted in an unlevel surface on which to build, and only 15 planks. Needless to say, students experienced success based
Once we fully understood the hierarchy of needs, we read books in our English classes, reading them through the lens of Maslow's in effort to assess and evaluate which levels, if any, the specific characters had reached. At Swatswood, for example, we read the memoir, The Glass Castle, by Jeanette Woz, which captures the dysfunction of the Woz family, but also the intense love they have for each other. We were able to give an inside look on the hardships of Jeanette Woz's broken childhood, often wondering how she was able to feel both love and belonging, as well as esteem, when her physiological and safety needs were never met. Exploring a book in English class through a psychological lens helped a reader, helped us reach a deeper understanding of the content and also of Maslow's hierarchy of needs.
So up until this point of the presentation, we focused on the essential question posed in the classroom portion of our project. Rockingham County best create a safe and caring environment for all our CPS students? Keep in mind that as we explored what it means for us just physical safety, but also emotional safety. Additionally, what it means for us to feel cared for is that we have a voice in our own education.
Before we begin to discuss the specifics of the work we've done beyond the classroom, we'd like to address why the second question is the one that guided our work. This question is rooted in the RCPS Community Dialogue Initiative, which began as a way for community members to address the challenging issues that affect public education in our county. The expectation of this initiative is for the group members, who represent the diverse and often opposing viewpoints of the stakeholders in the wider RCPS community, to engage in respectful dialogue, all in an attempt to answer this specific question, which again is, how can Rockingham County best create a safe and caring environment for all RCPS students?
As students who attend Rockingham County schools, we because of this, we are the biggest stakeholders. And our input and our own answer to this question should be considered.
for student input. They realized that they could not have had these discussions without our voices. We would like to thank all these community members who recognize our importance
Rockingham County Public Schools want is a seat at any decision-making table that involves our education. While I know there are only eight of us here speaking this evening, we started this project with 450 juniors across the county and narrowed our delegate number down to 85, asking only the most committed and passionate students to continue on in the process. The eight of us are here to speak on behalf of those 450 juniors who started the Safe and Caring School projects with us.
Why us? Why are we the ones representing the students? While the delegation of 85 students were asked to nominate a peer who stood out to them as an overall leader, we are standing here because our peers have decided that we are the most dedicated to making a change and trust us to be their voice.
In December, all 450 of us were given the opportunity to attend a field trip to a location near our respective schools, one that was big enough to accommodate all of the precipitating juniors. away in school and present potential solutions to those issues. While there, we spoke with adults such as our teachers, community leaders, and central office personnel to see
For example, students at my school not only proposed a self-defense club to address physical health and safety needs.
I'm happy to announce that the inaugural meeting of East Rock's Self-Defense Club was held last Wednesday. Not only will it meet weekly, but our teacher and the club sponsor, Mrs. Mann, has arranged for kickboxing, karate, and gong fu instructors to come and present lessons. This is just one example of how student voices lead to student choices.
Then, on January 6th, the 89 delegates from each of the county's high schools gathered together in the Hall of Presidents at James Madison University, many of us never having met each other. At the conclusion of our day, 14 different groups presented two-minute pitches that included solutions to the problems we face. We will share this evening's presentation with you, and by clicking on each of the images on Slide 14, you'll be able to click on links and view each of these pitches. At this time, we'll summarize needs RCPS students have at each level of Maslow's hierarchy and touch briefly on solutions presented on January 6th before addressing our overall solution.
Level one solutions presented address food insecurity and sleep deprivation. In order to make sure that RCPS students don't go hungry, a group of students proposed the Lunchbox Project. Also to deal with lack of adequate sleep, as well as to support research, another group proposed a mental health councilor dedicated to each school building and for also to, for those personnel to make themselves visible, accessible, and approachable.
One group presented a student advocacy board. This board would give students a platform to address issues within their school and throughout the county in order to enact change. Level three also addresses the need for more mental health resources to help us meet that love and belonging need. One example is for each school to form a mental health club, one that would also work with parents to help educate them where mental health is concerned.
Level four needs are related to educational opportunities and also decisions that are made that impact, sorry, impact our school day as well as our curriculum choices. Several students feel that there should be more opportunities while at school to explore future careers. Additionally, a group presented an idea that restructures the AP prerequisite system. Finally, a group presented multiple ideas related to personalized learning, including project-based learning and standards-based grading, among other ways to make sure that students are learning. I also have a few papers to hand to each of y'all relating to Maslow's hierarchy and our solution, but
As you can see, the students in Rockingham County schools have identified how critical the various levels of needs are within our lives and created many proposals to address how our needs have to be met in order for us to strive towards self-actualization throughout our school day. We realize that we can't ask you to meet all of these needs at once, or even to enact several of these solutions at one time. We need to focus on what's most realistic right now.
What we as RCPS delegates decided is that a student advisory committee, one made up of representatives from each level of Maslow's, is an umbrella solution to our collective concerns. The mission for the RCPS Student Advisory Committee is to allow student stakeholders to have a seat at any table at which decisions are made that impact education, as well as before policies are implemented.
Not only is this realistic, but the advisory committee, a teacher advisory committee, and a classified staff committee.
Regarding the advisory committee will be comprised of students from our delegation of 89, and will begin meeting next month. These students will serve on the committee through the end of the next
they should meet with their school principal. During the week three meeting, each committee should select a rep to meet with the superintendent to discuss the most pressing issues and present solutions. During the fourth week of each month, committee reps should attend the school board meeting and speak about the work that was done that month.
A committee made up of eight students who are committed to coming up with solutions to challenges within their school is necessary. I hope that we've convinced you that with student voices, not only come student choices, but also a better educational opportunity for all of us. Thank you for your time this evening. We'd love your permission to start student advisory committees at each of the high schools in our county. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask at this time?
I commend your work. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you for having us.
We love it.
So who's actually at one of the meetings, you know, said, I wish I had, when we, when I talked about having a student advisory, we did the usual thing. who really represent that entire student body. And so when you presented this idea of a larger group, you know, students that, at least I really, really liked it. And now, what you have to remember is that classified parent and teacher advisories do not meet every month, right? So there are four meetings a year. And so that would be my conversation, maybe, again, if you think about this having to happen, you know, in each school, basically, you would be committed every week, right? That that's a significant amount of time, whether there's a way to maybe structure that similarly where it's multiple times a year. I think that would be a good conversation. I absolutely love the idea, and what I will say is, you know, when you look at the topics that came up tonight, you know, this wasn't a process where advisors, teachers, central office staff, or the superintendent were there to give them ideas. They actually brought the ideas to us, and then we could filter some of them. You know, we talked about standards-based grading and some of the other items, and it was simply, our role was to provide information when it comes to 90 instructional hours for the year, and the students were simply amazing. And I think that's one of the things we have to remember, you know, oftentimes And I do have to give credit, of course, to all the students, all 450 of you, because the initial meetings were amazing. But then also to the people who were willing to put a lot of time into this. Your teachers that were present at all these meetings, and your administrators who provided, you know, pizza, provided the space, you know, the transportation. And then also, of course, Amy Johnson, who, yeah, no, it's okay. I saw you there saying, oh, no, don't mention me. You know, our librarian at Swatswood, who, again, was the inspiration for this with the project she had done at East Rock years ago about student safety that was just brilliant. And so she was the person I asked right away when we said, we need student voice, because she knows how to structure it. And to connect that to Maslow's hierarchy of needs was a really, really solid approach. we can observe from our central level, provide information, but can observe what students can really do when they are both given often is Katie Lepira organizing all the spaces. And again, it was truly inspirational to see the meetings and to see what you developed. You did all the work. And, you know, there are not many presentations that, you know, will top what you guys came up with as a group. And so, again, we believe in you and what you're going to do in the future, and how you've looked at school and how it affects you. And that when you look at the topics you came up with, they're all important topics, right? And so thank you, and thanks to everyone who was involved, Amy, again, Katie, Kim. And so, and again, thank you to everyone who supported this community, the dialogue group. There will be a public dialogue for the general public as well that will be announced shortly. So, but like you said, we didn't want to do any of that without ultimately also having student voice. So I'm amazed. So thank you.
So what is the next step?
Yeah, so for the students, we'll have to talk about, again, this is a proposal by students, right? So
They asked for our permission, but
every discussion for the board whether a process may involve literally one event for this group every week. So I implemented that group of four and we had one meeting and again, noticed the flaws right away. So a student advisory can certainly be held by the superintendent. I would think that it might be a good idea for the board to discuss, again, whether we should align that with the other advisories four times a year to make sure we have it. And that would still allow for it to happen at least once yet this year. And then, of course, it's with the next superintendent, you know, to decide, but I would be surprised if any superintendent would say, I don't want to hear from the students. You guys created a structure that's workable. So that's what I would say. It's more of a matter of discussion. That doesn't have to be a vote because it's not a policy matter.
Okay. So we won't see you at the next meeting, but we'll see you soon, right? Okay. Any other questions? Yes. Presentation and, ugh, I think it makes all of us happy when we see our students doing so well and. Our next item of business is a result. We have Dr. Melissa Bentley.
I am here to talk about the results of an important survey that happened across our 23 schools. We had 2021 session of the General Assembly and it was signed by the governor on March 30th of 2021. And it mandated that each local school division be required to complete and report on the results of an inclusive practice, self-assessment, and action planning instrument in our schools. And we do this once every three years. And so each of our schools got together and was led by their administrative. The law and state regulations that require that we always consider the least restrictive environment for our special education students and that. Three school results, I want to share with you the broad themes that we were able to pull out from those surveys. And so the first thing is many of our schools said that while we understand these laws, especially our special education teams in the buildings, these are, as you could see from the presentation earlier tonight, very dedicated professionals, very knowledgeable. There's always ways that we can work to improve on the solutions for students with disabilities. So the first thing is for us to create a clear and consistent vision and vocabulary for inclusive schools. And so that could mean increasing opportunities for students with disabilities to be included in the general education classroom and especially in the general education curriculum. Something that we've said a lot this year is all means all. And so that's a message that we want to continue to. Times expect. We want to continue to discuss the concept of shared ownership for all students and then identify. The second thing that they wanted to improve on is the effective use of resources for special education students, but also for our special education teachers. We want to make sure that our special education teachers have access to all instructional resources. Special education teachers work across content and curriculum. They have to understand reading, math, science, social studies, social skills, functional behavior, academics, and all of those things. And so we want to make sure that while we focus on the professional development of them in their own content area, that they understand and have access to all content. We want to work with staff to clearly define the role of paraprofessionals in all the classes that they serve. As you know, we've done a lot of work this year with celebrating our paraprofessionals. And so we want to continue to. That general education teachers and special education teachers can collaborate and have shared planning time. Emerging skills and competencies. We want to be able to make sure we're communicating our mission and vision to any new teachers that come to Rockingham.
Any additional questions?
Thank you very much for working on this.
All right.
Things and you've brought a perspective to your department that takes Rockingham County schools to that next step of improving our education system. So thank you.
Ms. Sheffler, why I got you here. Did, did they ever, did you guys ever talk about putting any playground equipment for the special needs kids at any of the schools? I know that's been a topic of discussion where here we are at the budget, talking about the budget this year, but was that anything you've ever heard of with talking about inclusion with the special needs kids and things?
Our special education advisory council, which is led by parents, has, has looked into that. I'm not sure where they are at this point, but that's not something that we have in our budget to be able to fund, but I do think they've been looking at some community resources and seeing if they could get some, some volunteers and some community funds for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to budget planning for 2023, 24. Wow. Ms. Cheryl Mast.
Chair Lour, members of the board, and Dr. Scheichel. This evening for your review. This evening for your review is the governor's budget. And I've also updated the other revenues except for the local share. The first section that we will look at is our miscellaneous revenue. We do not expect many changes in these accounts and you'll notice that the total increase for all of that is $40,000 expected for next year. The second section is the state share. As you can see from the total at the bottom, this sheet shows an increase of approximately $8.2 million from the state. As you may have probably heard by now, the calculation tool that we get from the state had an error in it. This error will be corrected when we receive the House and Senate versions, which I expect later this week. But as of tonight, we are just looking at the governor's budget. So I believe that that $8.2 million you see at the bottom is overstated by approximately $1.5 million, leaving it more likely around a 6.7 increase in revenue. But again, this is the governor's budget. So when the House and Senate budget comes out, we'll not only see this correction, but we may see other changes in those budgets. I'll have a better sense of revenue information for, at our next meeting. The third section is our federal revenue. You can see from this slide that most of our federal revenue activity comes from the ESAR, some people have called COVID funds, ending that we received during the pandemic. We used most, most of these funds for one-time expenditures and are not facing any future difficulties with these funds coming to an end. And then lastly there, you'll see the local share of education. And as I stated earlier, I have not made any change to that amount as to what may be forthcoming from our local Board of Supervisors. So in summary, based on the governor's budget and the correction in the Calc tool, I believe that the total revenue before any local share is approximately five and a half million dollars. That would be the seven million that you see minus what I have calculated to be approximately 1.5 million overstated in the state budget from that error. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have on this.
I do have a question, Ms. Mast.
Yes.
Because this came up in the past, right? So you mentioned it that you haven't made any changes to the local share of education. That does not mean that we're simply not going to request.
That's correct.
Funds from, from the county, right? It simply is a placeholder at this point because the conversations are just beginning.
Are just beginning. And I, I didn't want to publicly be presumptuous and put a number in there. That's why that has not changed.
Thank you. And thanks for the endless hours of work that you've put into this.
Yes, thank you. Board members, do we have any additional questions?
Thank you for your time and we'll see you this week.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And this is, by the way, one of the reasons Ms. Mast puts in the endless hours so that she doesn't come to work like someone in the finance department at DOE. And someone says, hey, we found a mistake in your spreadsheet. And they say, oops, how much is it? $200 million. That's exactly what happened, so.
For those of you who haven't been following the news, that is exactly what happened. Somebody, somebody had a whoopsie and it kind of impacted our budget, but I believe the, the House and the Senate have, they're going to hold us harmless and we hope.
Not clear yet to what extent.
But yeah, so thank you. Thank you for no whoopsies. Okay. Board members, we do have reason to go into closed session and we have some folks waiting on us for closed session, but first we're going to move to school board questions and comments. And I'm going to start with.
Financial review, attendance report.
Oh, whoopsies. Yeah, I already did that. Sorry, I did that in my head. Board members, you also have financial reviews and attendance reports in your packets for your review. Okay. Now we can move on to board questions, right? Okay, Dr. McWilkin.
I'm just going to say the presentation by the students was inspiring and uplifting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cross.
I don't have a whole lot to say. One of the things I'd heard, I had the opportunity also to attend the community nights with the superintendent search at Spotswood High School and at Turner Ashby High School. And one of the biggest things I heard was just on transparency with the community, talking about wanting to feel that both for the parents in the community and also with the students as well. So this transition and everything we've been going through has been a great process. Want to thank you, Ms. Lour, and also Dr. McWilkin for the time you guys put into the superintendent search firm and BWP. I really enjoyed, Dr. Harris, got a lot of good feedback from the community with Dr. Harris. Very first time I heard him speak, I really liked that guy. So he was, it's been a good process, good transition, good talking with them, finding out information. That whole process is going well and I wanted to publicly thank you two for the work and time you guys have put into that. So thank you. So I don't have any questions tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Folk.
I just, I just want to remark, I remain and continue to be very impressed with our, our dedicated personnel in the school system and with our bright students. They're just, they show what is taking place.
Yes. Our students are amazing folks, which brings me to that part of the evening. Do we have any students still in the, in the room? Because we want to, all you have to do is say, hey, I'm here. I haven't left yet. Raise your hand. I can see you guys looking at each other. Welcome. I hope you guys have enjoyed democracy in action tonight. And thanks for coming. And I think there might be some younger ones here, but we won't point them out. Okay. I think, I don't, Dr. Scheichel, do you have any further comments?
Just really quick in response to, to just clarify a little bit more, you know, the procurement rules because Mr. Cross had asked earlier, you know, it's important to remember that this isn't an all or nothing. So not every purchase, of course, ends up in sealed bids. Not everything is, you know, in terms of negotiations like we have sometimes where we create a rubric and then say, okay, now with the one that has the most points, price isn't the only thing, previous established relationship and so on, you know, you can use that in some cases. And then, of course, there is a limit below which you can simply buy the stuff, right? So there is certainly room for discussion. I want to make that clear, too. The, the law doesn't require, for example, that that minimal purchase limit is at $5,000 or what, you know, whatever that is. So there's, there's a lot of room for conversation. Obviously, the purpose is that, you know, that governments don't spend taxpayer money in a way that, that seems like, okay, we could have gotten this way cheaper and saved the taxpayers' money. But I want to make sure that, that I don't come across as saying, hey, it's all or nothing. You know, it's always the low bid. There are procedures where established relationships come into play. So it's certainly a topic for conversation. I just want to clarify that because the law sets limits that are higher than what most local governments set. So the Procurement Act, I believe, sets it at $100,000. Below that, you could theoretically have a different process, but that's then based on local policy, right? And so even Fairfax's, I believe, is $5,000. And I think ours is as well. So there are all kinds of layers and so I'm not saying it's not a good conversation, just that it's not as simple as saying, hey, let's give this to a local company. So, you know, the point's well taken, there has, there can be conversation around it and it's just more complex and would involve certainly legal advice and, and also conversation with the county because oftentimes, you know, that's synchronized. We ask the county for money and so we also want to make sure that the county is comfortable with the levels, you know, at which we use a different process. So just for clarification.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Thanks to everyone for coming tonight. I wish you safe travels home and also take a moment, it sounds like the weather's going to be gorgeous tomorrow, so enjoy Valentine's Day with your sweetheart. And then take a moment to thank our SROs on Wednesday for, is it statewide SRO day? Members, we do have reason to go into closed session. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation. And A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline and requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record concerning. information contained in the scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Dr. McWilkin. Do I have a second?
Second. I'm sorry.
Mr. Folk just beat you to it. Thank you, Mr. Cross. I mean, oops, Mr. Folk, Mr. Cross just beat you to it. Thank you, Mr. Cross. All those, is there any discussion? Hearing none? We'll vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. We are in closed session. Sorry, I don't remember.